Okay, all right, I'm gonna call to order the Weathersfield School Board meeting for May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty-two P M. Um, I guess we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance and have Finn lead it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, um, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? Nobody online? Um, all right, we have approval of the minutes. Did everyone have a chance to?
I can read it quick.
Quick flip over.
Yeah.
Um. I did notice a couple of little changes, but I'll take a motion to approve them and then we'll all commit to changes.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay, and we'll do both at once or?
Sure.
So that's the minutes from April sixteen and our special meeting on April twenty-second, which was just super quick. Yeah. Okay, the changes that I have, um, uh, administrative report just needs the T fixed on the end of the report.
Yep.
And, um, and then understanding the next agenda, uh, B and C were actually under board retreat, so just board retreat and then like an indent and then, or it shouldn't be two separate items.
It all worked.
Yeah. Okay, um, and I didn't see anything at all in the, our quick special meeting. Anybody have any other changes? All in favor of approving the minutes from April sixteenth and twenty-second? Say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous? Okay, um. So up next we have public participation. Do we have any public participation? Yep, any online?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. We'll move on to the student presentation of learning.
Start off then.
Yeah. So just a couple of events that are, that happened or are coming up. Uh, we had the play on April twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Um, that was, that went great. I had a lot of fun and I'm sure a lot of my classmates had a lot of fun. Um, we have the basket fundraiser coming up. That is the fundraiser that the eighth grade is doing for the field trip. Um, the eighth grade dance is coming up this Friday, um, and Field Day will also be, I'm not sure which day it is.
June fifth.
June fifth. Uh, the eighth grade trip will be June seventh, I believe, and the eighth grade graduation will be June tenth. Um, looking forward to all of those.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have the administrative report. Brian, are you gonna start?
Yep. She's gonna go ahead and present it. There we go.
There you go.
All right, so this is our leader report for May the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. First off, I just wanna thank, um, our incredible PTO for a great staff appreciation week. They went above and beyond and truly showed their appreciation for our staff, so we appreciate them as well. And with that being said, we're gonna have our PTO Vice President, Meredith Keller, talk about some of the items that are going on with PTO.
Yeah, I thank you for your time this evening. Uh, let's see, well, we just finished a very, um, successful teacher appreciation and we had, um, lots of events going on throughout the week and lots of appreciation every day in different forms. Lots of food though, um, that really speaks to the, to the heart. Uh, so I wanna thank our leadership on that subcommittee to, um, bringing that, um, to us. What else we have going on? So let's see, eighth grade science, um, that is a small fundraiser we're doing currently, and they can still be purchased and the information is either, I think in the office, there's still sheets and online, and we've received ours on our lawn this week and it looks pretty good. They're a lot larger than anticipated, so well worth, um, that support. Let's see, oh, before, I'm jumping all over the place, but before April, or right after April break, we gifted, um, some new recess equipment to all grades and, um, I firsthand witnessed even middle school enjoying some of the new chalk and, um, so it was appreciated by all. Um, we presented those during lunches, too much excitement and squeals and, um, it's nice to see it in use. Uh, swag orders, merch, um, Weathersfield merch, we did another successful order and those have all been delivered. I believe I was the last order to be picked up, so those have all been, um, delivered. So if you ordered something, it's in your child's hands or it went out the door, so be looking in the backpacks. Uh, we have been running our booster booth this spring. Those have been, um, successful as well and appreciated by those who are here in the evening hours for, um, some dinner time, and we will be continuing those for most of the home games. There has been, have been some changes in our schedule, games added, so, um, stay tuned on our Facebook page to make sure that we're here and you can grab some closer treats. Big news is that the sign, the electric sign that, um, was ordered is now on property, housed here until further work can be done on it to install it, but that is a big step. It was delivered, I don't have the date exactly, but, um, it is on property, so we are really excited about that and they do. Uh, as Finn mentioned, due to make this Field Day, we will be there to support Field Day. As we have done in the past, we provide volunteers to help, um, some of, and some of the activities. I do photos, um, so we'll be there again this year to, um, providing support, um, to Mrs. Berry and her efforts. And whether or without surprise, I'm getting proud, right? Um, let's see, oh, I'm requesting also permission to be on the August agenda, myself or whoever is in leadership. At that time, we usually present at the August meeting our calendar for the year. Um, so we would ask to do that again this year and get your, um, approval on those items all in one list. And then lastly, just happened tonight, we're at Panther Cup Night. Um, we provided a photo backdrop, um, I did not attend, but I've heard it was a big success. Um, lots of great photos taken and lots of fun had with our props. So, did it say that? All right, in the spirit of great mother, I'm gonna keep short.
Thank you, Meredith, we appreciate you jumping in there and doing it. All right, our next is, um, to celebrate Finn again a little bit. So Finn will be leaving us this year because he is graduating. So, um, I just want him to have a great job. He's done all year, um, he's sort of my sidekick as well, because now I don't even go in it. So in the mornings during announcement time, I am outside doing parking lot, helping our kids get in, and Finn now goes in there and he does announcements. So, um, he gets a little help since we have a little leadership students, but he, he's the one, he's the, first it was him and I doing the tag team show on it, and then he's just sort of taken over and done the whole thing, which is amazing. So, um, I'm trying to get him to train the next people to come and do it, because I love that students do it and it's their voice and so the students know that they're gonna hear Finn every day in the morning. Um, and then he's done an excellent job at the school board meetings. It's not always an easy position to do, um, but he's been our first student representative on the Weathersfield School Board, so we appreciate it. So can you come up with a reminder? We have a couple of things for you. So first off, this is, there's something in there, I have to give out Weathersfield swag, though. That's sort of my rule, I have to give it out, and then this is from all of us as well.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, we appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being part of the team.
I'm trapped in here, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So you can open it whenever you want to and then show it off a little bit, okay?
And maybe he could go, maybe he can go talk to like the sixth and seventh graders and try to talk up being a.
Yeah, because we've got a couple of people that we sort of tapped and said, okay, and so he's gonna start training them and, uh, and then it's, yeah, it's, so just the responsibility that he takes on with the other kiddos is pretty incredible that he does that. And, um, so we appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that being said, okay, so Finn mentioned the play that we did. So one word to describe the play.
Awesome.
Amazing, so the play was absolutely amazing. If you missed it, you missed out, because all the students did such a great job. Um, Mrs. Youngling, our director, did an amazing job with it. Here's some of the sets, some of the costumes, Meredith was involved in the costumes as well. Um, it was truly a magical production, and so Mark helped out with the sets, and then it was great because we had students also helping with the sets through our art class, through also through our winter activities as well, so it was truly a culmination of everybody's efforts together. It was lots, lots more late nights for, for Mark and Erica, um, but the kids.
I heard some people drove down to New Jersey and that's a classic.
Yes, they drove down to New Jersey, they, I, so it was truly a family event there, uh, uh, of getting all that stuff done, so we appreciate it. And then, um, we also had a special thank you to Nancy Nutile McMeney, sorry, Nancy, if I butchered your name. So she came here and took pictures for us, and then she gave us the rights so that we could share them with the families. And they're great pictures, those are some of her pictures, so we appreciate that. So we'll be sharing those out, the specific pictures of the students to those families, so the families can have really nice pictures of their kiddos as well. All right. Leader of me, our seven habits we're focused on, Leadership Day is May twenty-fourth. The students are getting ready, the staff is getting ready. Um, we do, we posted the schedule or the tentative schedule, there still might be a couple tweaks. Um, but we are starting off in the auditorium in the gym with the event, and it's a musical event. Um, Beauty and the Beast is even going to sing the song, the cast of it, it's gonna be singing the song there as well. So like I said, if you missed part of it, you get the opportunity to see that on that day. Um, and then we'll end with a school-wide barbecue for families, and then it is the early release day and then students will go home, and then the staff will stay here and we'll talk about what went well, what we can improve on, because we can always tweak things and make things a little bit better. Um, but we're excited about the event and it's truly gonna be student-run. We even have our emcees that are doing it, and we're just sitting back and, um, they're, they're taking the reins, which is sometimes hard to let that control go, but we're in good hands with our students that are doing it, so we appreciate that. VT cap, so we finished that, um, grades three through eight did an amazing job with VT cap. Grades five and eight also had to do science, three through eight did language arts and math. Five and eight did science as well. Um, we finished right on time, we should have been actually a little bit ahead of time with all the makeup, so, um, shout out to Mrs. Hootner for doing a fantastic job being the testing coordinator. It is so nice that she loves doing that and she was able to do it and get it done and follow through on all of the makeups. So someday we will get the results, not holding my breath. Um, then the students also just took STAR, so they took STAR, language arts and math, so I will have the data from that once we get everybody done for our next meeting, okay? So we can look at some of the STAR data, would be great to do that for our next one, for our retreat. Safety drills, we did our fire drill for the month of April, got one more to do in May. So the kids have been doing a great job on it, it is so nice that our students come out so quietly and they do such an amazing job with the fire drill. They walk out, do it, line up like they're supposed to, they even remind the teacher sometimes that they need to put up their green card so that we know that everybody is accounted for. So we have one, one teacher, it's always fun to get this one teacher and say, you didn't quite, and the student's like, you need to get this, I won't mention the teacher's name, um, because she'd be upset with me, but it was nice to be able to see the kids being really responsible for that, because I've been in other places and fire drills always aren't as smooth as they are here, so. Um, Panther Cup Night, Meredith mentioned that, amazing turnout tonight for the Panther Cup Night. Um, we not only had our PTO there, we wanna thank them for their donations to our families, but we also had, um, four wins there to get volunteers and talk to them a little bit about four wins in the program. So it was great, the staff did an amazing job, was always with it, it is such a well-attended event. I think we had all but two students that attended or projec, students?
Only one, because one of them's not coming.
One, okay, so just one. Um, and so the, the students go around and they are able to, they start off with their name tag and get a book and a bag, and then they go around and go to different stations, um, we've got some photos in there. BJ loves the shaving cream. Photos already, yeah, see? Technology is great. Um, we were able to get that in there and put it in there, um, to show everybody what's going on as far as the Panther Cup. It's always such a fun event, because the kids are so excited to be able to go in there and see what their classroom looks like, because they did come back, they did a kindergarten registration about a month and a half ago, right before we went on, um, spring break, but then, um, I don't really get to see the kids, because I'm just talking to the parents, and so it's really my first opportunity to really meet the kids and interact with them, but it's such an awesome event that we do here at Weathersfield, so. Enrollment for FY twenty-four, enrollment was really high, we had an average, I think it's ninety, it's underneath that, sorry. It was like ninety-six, I believe, right? Ninety-six, seventh grade actually beat out eighth grade this month. They did a little bit better with percentage-wise, so, um, but just by a hair, but it, it just shows that our kids like coming to school.
Third grade's high.
Oh, third grade is high, sorry.
Ninety-seven.
And so they, um, but it just shows that our kids wanna be here and they wanna be here every day, which is nice. Hiring update?
No.
Okay, so we were able to hire two new amazing teachers and they happen to be here tonight. Um, so we have Sophia Cantola, so she's gonna be our new, new first grade teacher. She just graduated from the University of Colorado at Boulder, and she just flew in last night and she's already here. Got the tour of the school.
I hope you didn't miss graduation or anything.
She got all that done, so she's, we're excited to have her here in first grade. And then Brianna Cavacas is gonna be our new third grade teacher, so she's, they're both local. Um, and so Brianna has taught for three years, and so she's gonna, this will be her fourth year and she decided to make the jump to come over to Weathersfield, so we're excited to have both of them here.
How much will be mine?
Fifth year, okay, sorry. Cheated you a year, I apologize. So we're excited about having both of them here and being able to be part of our team, and they're very energetic, uh, about here, and so Sophia has a little bit of time, so I'm already trying to get her to sub and do all those fun things, get a good grip, so, um, audit. And then we are still looking for that, because we have another month of the school year, so we're still looking for that K eight foreign language teacher, so it's still on there. So the ad's still out there, but we just haven't had the bites, so I won't have to report that next month.
Yeah. I don't think anybody's coming to work.
I, I don't think so, not the last month, but that's what we're doing, we're following through on that and making sure we're doing it. All right, building community, so, um, we've had a busy month. We did have funeral services for Chief Swalding, we had our production Beauty and the Beast, and then we had a dental hygienist at school that just finished up. She serviced seven kids doing cleaning for the students, which was nice for, so kids that haven't been able to have an opportunity to go to the dentist, it's weird that dentists come here, the hygienist, and give the kids clean, so that was pretty awesome that we did that. Um, the other thing too is we are, well, it's on there later on, so I'm not, I forgot that. Okay, upcoming next. Lots of things going on, so, um, Panther Cup Night was tonight, academic leadership team, so we're meeting tomorrow with our grade level teams. Um, May seventeenth is the grad, eighth grade graduation dinner and dance from five to eight P M. So the students arrive at five o'clock, from five to five-thirty is sort of that photo op time, they come in, we take pictures, parents get to see everything, and then at five-thirty, we sort of usher the parents out, they sit down for dinner. It's a really nice dinner, um, that we as the staff serve them, so we're their waiters and waitresses, and they don't have to pick up a thing, and it's great, um, and it's really fun for the kids. And then I also always let the kids know that they can bring cell phones, take pictures in the first part, but then we take their cell phones away, because I'm a big huge fan of not having a cellphone at the dinner table, and we're having dinner as last time as a group. Um, May twentieth is our band concert, next week is also our book fair that's going on, spring sports award night, pride assembly next Friday, Youth Leadership Day, early release day for students, June fifth is Field Day. June sixth is the high school senior walkthrough, so we're inviting all of our seniors that, um, went to Weathersfield or live in Weathersfield to come back through, and, um, it'll be in the newsletter as well, and we're sending out information, but to have the seniors walk back through the school and then our students clap for them and recognize their accomplishment of going on to high school. And then June seventh is the eighth grade trip, excited about that, to be able to go up to Burlington. We've got some surprise things for the kids in there too that they don't know about quite yet, but it should be a lot of fun. And then June tap is our eighth grade graduation, which I was realizing last night, and this is just a Brian story, so I'm gonna share it, sorry, um, is, so my daughter's gone to school with me and been her principal since she was in kindergarten.
Oh. It's gonna be a rough graduation?
No, I'm still. And then June thirteenth is the final day of school, which is an early release day. All right? Sorry. So thank you, and then I'll turn it over to Christine.
Good time for you.
Yeah, good time.
Well, there's lots of exciting stuff going on here, and it's always, um, it's a life to come, it's always well-attended and the kids are involved, so I'm looking forward to lots of those events. So my, my report is always attached in fall, but I'm gonna share some highlights from the April. The April, um, Winter Southeast for Rise reunion board meeting, um, we, this year, as you know, you've heard, we tested out student-led conferences and, um, by and large, they went really well. We have a few things to work out for next year, and we gathered some feedback from, um, from, uh, parents as well as staff. I don't have the staff feedback tonight, but I do have the parent feedback, um, as you can see. The first question, I'll read it, because it's really small. Student-led conferences help, help me understand my child's, uh, perception of their strengths and challenges as a learner, and, and that was, um, people were pretty much in agreement of that, there were some that weren't, but for the most part, there were. Uh, leadership portfolios, which is what the kids worked on to share their, their growth, their journey and their learning, um, helped my child take ownership of their learning and, and people thought that that was, that was true as well for the most part. And the last one was, as a parent, I felt supported to participate in the process, and so that was really good feedback. We did get some comments, which I pulled a few for you. Um, most parents or caregivers really thought it was a wonderful way for students to share their work, express themselves, give them some practice, um, talking about their goals and their growth, and, um, gave parents just kind of an inside look at what they're doing. Many parents said that they would, um, they, they liked the student-led part of the conference, but they would also appreciate them just as a teacher, so we're gonna have to figure out how to tweak that for next year. I think the other issue that came up was, was it your school that had some remote conferences? It wasn't your school? One school, you know, honored, we've been doing remote or hybrid since the pandemic, because it is convenient for families and it works, and we get, uh, a lot more participation, so didn't quite figure out how, how to have the student with their leadership, uh, portfolio at home, and so we, we need to work through that. But overall, pretty, pretty good feedback, so we're excited, it was the first year, I think we'll grow and get better as we, as we do them more. Um, the question for May, which will go out this Friday in the newsletter, is really about the, um, continuous improvement plan, which we have to do every two years, we are up, Angie is working on it, she's trying to gather, um, stakeholders to help with that process, but she has a survey, so I hope you'll take a few minutes and take it. It's very quick, it's just about which, which areas you would like to see, um, us focus on in that plan, so. It's a quick one, I'll bring you back the results. Um, Katie is here to give you a follow-up on the support staff positions.
Um, there are two open support staff positions at Winter, um, one is special ed funded, the other one is locally funded to the Mount Scotty School District, um, and they've already been posted internally, um, according to our master agreement. The other, um, there will be, there's also two leaves, um, happening across the SU, they're not posted yet. Not sure if, completely sure of the end date yet, so those will be posted soon.
Questions on that? Good news for us. Yeah, thank you for bearing with us on that, it was some difficult conversations, but, but we're really happy that we have positions available. All right, I am inviting all of you, all the graduations, you don't have to come, but you're certainly invited. We have, um, a busy week coming up in June. Uh, the, the, um, AVS and the Heartland and the Windsor Middle School are all on the same day, so that's gonna be a busy day, but, uh, the high school is June seventh and Weathersfield, of course, on the tenth, and, um, hopefully you'll all be able to make that one at least. And the other thing I'm just gonna talk about, but I know we have a discussion, an item on it later, just to let you know, there is a new mandatory childcare tax, it's a payroll tax, goes into effect July first. It is a point four-four percent tax on wages, and the employer can pass off up to like one-one percent onto the employee. This came up at the SU board meeting, Sarah and Marie, um, and Mark were there. The SU board, um, decided to cover that full tax. We've had two other local board meetings since then, um, Heartland and Mount Scotty, and they have both decided to cover the full tax, so you'll have to decide tonight, um, what Weathersfield's gonna do with that. But that's from your discussion items. And that is all for us.
Christine, can you move to the side about the support staff? So Windsor, so you're saying there's opening at Windsor?
Sorry. Yes.
Opening at Windsor and then, I didn't hear what the other one.
There's two openings at Windsor.
Okay.
Um, for support staff positions, one is, um, under the special ed funding, and one is under the Windsor, uh, the Mount Scotty School District. So two positions at the Windsor School.
At Windsor, yeah.
Which is nice. Okay. All right, Amber, turn it back over to you.
Um, as far as the child tax credit goes, do you want to say anything more about it or?
No, I think, I think it, well, I can share that, um.
Like how much will it cost?
When Tina did the numbers, it was going to cost the SU all our districts, uh, roughly forty-four thousand dollars, I think. So if you break that down, um, I would anticipate Weathersfield would probably be nine or ten thousand out of that forty-five, based on numbers of employees, maybe a little less, um, because you have less employees than the Portland, I think. Yeah, we do, in total, so you can pass on a percentage of that to the employee if you choose to.
And that covers all employees, not just the subsegments?
All employees.
Teachers, voice staff.
I think it's all employees in Vermont.
In Vermont, right, right, of course, yeah.
Yes. So does anyone wanna make a motion or, um, as far as covering the whole thing or?
And what would be the mechanism that would do that?
You just make a motion.
No, but I mean, where's, where's the money coming from?
Oh, it, it.
From our budget.
It just come out of your budget, yes, yeah.
And there is some extra money.
Because we passed a budget, how is that?
I, I know there is some extra money in the budget, because some things cost less, we didn't budget it for them, so.
Yeah, so it's in the budget.
We definitely have these nine thousand dollars actually. So basically moving forward, it's going to have to be like a line on it, like put in the budget.
Yeah, right.
It'll, it'll get rolled into, um, wages, salary, and the benefits, yeah. But, um, so did anyone want to pass any of that on or you wanted to cover it in full?
I vote it's covered.
I vote too. That would, that would be perfect, be covered in full. Um, so would someone like to make a motion or?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Vincent is making a motion to cover the childcare tax in full.
In full.
Any further discussion? Yeah, um, favor say aye.
Aye.
And that was unanimous.
Thank you.
Business office now. Okay, um, so new hires, we already did.
Yep.
Oh, we have technically have to, we have to approve them, okay. All right, I will take a motion to, um, can you say their names?
Yeah, so Sophia Cantola and Brianna Cavacas.
All motion.
Okay, Sarah's making that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, and we'll record them back here next year. Um, let's see, up next we have, um, board retreat. Um, so board retreat's gotten a little less fun the past couple of years, um, and now it's really not fun. Um, so, yeah, there's, it's, it's more of just another meeting.
I wanna make it fun, Amber.
But, um, but we do have to allow the public to be here, um, we can't do it, uh, so I was thinking maybe we'll just have it at the school. It won't be one involved anymore. But, uh, so unless somebody wants to have it at their house, but we do have to allow the public to be there, so that would be the only thing.
I guess I missed that.
Yeah.
It's new.
You should warn it, yeah.
Typically, the public doesn't show up, but we get out to invite them.
Sure, I've been studying my school board bond.
So, um, so is everybody okay with just? So, so is everybody okay with just having the meeting at the school? Maybe we can do a little potluck here or something like that? What time would you want to start from there? Typically, we start a little earlier since it involves having some dinner, so. I mean, what's the earliest people? Yeah, is that good time for everybody? What time, yeah, what time's good for you, Deb? I think you come from the furthest.
That should be fine. I'll, I'll just make up for this.
Okay, all right, so 5:00 on the 11th. At the school. Is it, is it hybrid or just?
Uh, no, just in fact, just in person.
Yes, Becky?
Is that for June or a different month?
June 11th.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't typically have a minute taker. We usually just, yeah, but since one handle it.
I'll record.
Yeah, we don't. We sort of keep it just an outline of what we've been discussing. So the two things that I wanted to make sure we had on for the board retreat agenda would be, well, would be the policy about the executive sessions and open meeting law. Are there any other sort of board, like education that you guys are interested in having at the board retreat? Anything else you have questions about or wonder about?
I feel like we should probably go back to the list that we created that.
Oh, the radar list, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And pull from there.
Yeah, so go, so review the radar list.
And goal setting.
Because there was some procedural stuff, I think, that we recognized that should happen for new board members, current members, things like that.
Kind of map that out, I think.
Also, on our radar list is new curriculum implementation. Do we have any set policies on curriculum implementation?
We just passed a curriculum policy. I don't know if it was implementation. We'll look it up.
And is there any way you could just forward that to me?
Yeah. I think it was adoption. Wasn't it personal adoption?
It was, yeah. Yeah, I don't think it was.
About adopting, yeah.
And it just, it just seems to me that we have policies and procedures for everything else. If we don't, perhaps like something we should look into just to establish a base timeline.
I will, I didn't realize my screen was up there, so. So could I fill the implementation?
Yeah, if, if, if we have any policies regarding that. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so. Anything else?
We were, we did goal setting last time.
Goal setting, yeah, that's sort of what the radar list is for, yeah. Um, okay. And then next on the items for discussion, we don't need to vote on anything with the board retreat, right? We just. Weathersfield School Board Representative to the, to the Windsor Southeast Supervisor Union Budget Committee. So I was volunteering to do this, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was good with that. And then we need to submit that to the WFCSU board so that they know who's going to be showing up. And Sarah will be my second if I can't do it right.
It starts in September.
It starts in September, yeah. So is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I don't think we need to vote on that either. We just had to. I just wanted to get everybody's okay. And then our last item for discussion is the dedication of the Scottney Bell School Bell. It's right over there. Ginger Winberg's family invited us to present it at her, at her memorial service, which took place, what was last Wednesday?
May 4th.
May 4th, two, I mean, two Saturdays ago. And I, I did, I gave a little speech and presented that to her family, but we need to make it official. So I'll make a motion to dedicate the Scottney Bell School Bell to Ginger Winberg.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion, okay. Deb, Deb made the motion? And, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Official. Can get the plaque officially attached.
And Mark did a great job redoing it. And he made a stand that is indestructible, pretty much. And it's just, it's been great. It's great having it out in front of the school. Right when you walk into our hallway, just people see it, so.
And the plaque turned out really nicely.
Yep, everything turned out great, so we want to wheel it down here so everybody can see it.
Okay, um, do we, we have a hand, Becky?
Oh, I just wanted to see, say I was at Ginger's service and Anne Marie did a wonderful job presenting.
Thank you, Becky.
Yes, it was very nice and touching.
Thank you. Ginger's done a lot for the community and she deserves to have something, yeah. Was glad to do it. And it was so nice of her family to invite us to come to the service to, to dedicate it, so it was very nice. Do we have any need for executive session? Okay. All right, so setting the next agenda. So our next meeting will be the board retreat. And we've already gone over what we want to do there. Did you, did you decide you're taking July off? Yeah, I, yeah, if anybody.
We could flash it, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, there's usually not much to talk about.
Yeah, it's a good way to teach.
Hold together a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if, yeah, if anything, yeah, if anything comes up, we can always schedule something, but we'll do that.
We'll reconvene in August after that.
Yeah, okay. So I guess I will just take a motion to adjourn. It's pretty much our fastest meeting ever.
I think everybody wants to get out because I'm excited.
Okay, I'll take a motion. Okay, Mark made the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, we're done. Thank you, everybody.